Okay, why don't we go ahead and get started with the August 3 regular meeting of the Brandon City Council, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Christina, can you call the roll?
Clark.
Here.
David.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Parliament.
Here.
Mayor Lumbergh.
Here. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions, comments, changes? Good. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two sets of minutes from July 13th and July 20th. I got a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes as presented. Any questions, comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have bills and claims submitted with the agenda. Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion is second to approve a total of $556,529.41 as presented in our board packet. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're at the public comment section of our agenda. Anybody from the public that would like to address the council can, may do so at this point. Hearing none, we'll continue on to our public hearing for one day alcohol license for Double-D Saloon and request for a street dance on September 12, 2020. Brian, you want to summarize?
Sure. The owners of Double-D contacted the city and asked if they could have a street dance on Dogwood from Maine to the railroad tracks on September 12th. You've got a copy of their license application, and there's also an agreement in your packet outlining their duties and what the city will do regarding the street dance.
I believe the owners of the facility are here. If the council had any questions for them, maybe ask them at this point. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion.
What time was the event, like, from when to when?
I'd say...
I'd ask you, yeah. I need you to step up to the mic. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, so the main event would be from 6:00 to 10:00 because the ordinance says that they want to shut down at 10:00, and then we'd do cleanup duties after that.
Any other questions, ladies and gentlemen?
We have a banned.
Right. And we'll shut down the band, and then push everybody inside because the bar will still, Double-D will still be open after that.
And we have private security that'll be hired that will help manage all people.
Okay, it's been a while since I've been to a street dance, back in my younger years. But is, do you have some kind of, like, I know they had, like, those orange, like, plastic fencing that will go kind of around it to kind of keep the younger kids out, or how does that all work?
Correct. So, did, yeah, we have this.
Look on page 27 of the packet. There's barricades at the end of each on the street, and then the black, solid black lines indicate...
That's like that orange fencing, construction fencing, if you will?
Mm-hmm.
And then the barricades would be kind of your entrance exits for, and then that's where we have that, that security, you know, the wristband, all that, so.
Okay, so would it just be 21 and older?
Correct.
Okay.
And then the plan would be, you know, ahead of that is to do food trucks, different things, you know, invite a couple different companies who do that locally, and then the music actually wouldn't start till 7:00. But the event and the, kind of, the blockage is that the planned event is the 6:00 to 10:00, but we'd like to do, you know, food trucks, you know, stuff like that from, you know, supper time, I guess, before the music starts, so.
Do you have a weather contingent date in case it's...
We do not.
Stormy, no?
We don't, just because I know the, the, the application process and get, get it to here, we picked a date, so we do understand if, you know, rains out, it rains out. I mean, so.
It never rains anymore, so don't worry about that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why we're having one, so it doesn't rain.
It sounds like fun.
And we, we did get a concerned call for the neighbors. We, we haven't talked to them, you know, leading up to this, since it is, you know, it is still up in the air for us, so we will speak with the neighbors, obviously, if we get a green light, so just the old friendly neighbor thing, you know, and just talk to everybody and just let them know what's going on, so.
Right, because I think that is not only a business, it's the resonance of those people.
Correct.
I believe I saw an email that said you were going to secure event insurance.
We, and I, did you have a copy, or?
Yeah, we have a certificate of liability. Our insurance covers it regardless, and then we just went above and beyond and had, certificate of liability has already been registered on for us.
So I believe the guy, there's a guidelines that we, speaking with Christina and the city, that whatever X amount of coverage had to happen, and that it, we've already spoke with our, the insurance company. So first, we did think it was a one day, but it is covered by ours with another specific notation for the day, so. Our big thing for this is, you know, and we have brand-new streets. It was rough getting here, but to start something down here and, you know, that, that particular street lends very well for this type of event, so, you know, goes well. We are looking at it, to make it an annual event, bring more people downtown, people from Sioux Falls into Brandon, you know, we're really looking forward to it, so. We've had a lot of good feedback in the community as well for doing something, so.
Any other questions or comments?
A motion to approve.
Could you make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license and the agreement?
Okay.
Done.
Motion is second to approve the one-day liquor license and, uh, street dance agreement as presented by the Double-D Saloon. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Item number 7C is a recognition of the, from the Department of Energy and Natural Resources, South Dakota Secretary's Award for Drinking Water Excellence. They note our public work staff of Raleigh Hooky, Donovan Carpenter, Troy Hillman, Dale Kerber, Larry Bixley, Bixby, and Jeremy Olson for their outstanding work in 19th consecutive Excellence in Drinking Water Award for this year. Congratulations, guys. Thank you for all your hard work. Next item of business is under the golf course to approve a design-build contract with Landscapes Unlimited. Looks like the approval of this will be for cost plus design fee for a total of 100, not to exceed 192,500.
For phase one of the...
For phase one.
Project.
Of the project. Phase two will be put off until we know more about FEMA funding. This is the repair of the pumps and the stuff that has to be done, as explained to us earlier by the administration.
Phase, phase one is repair of the pumps, possibly putting in new vertical turbine pumps to get them up out of the flood zone. That's phase one. Phase two is all of the improvements to the bunker and the, and the drainage that is still kind of waiting. We're all, still, we're waiting for all FEMA approval, but, uh, phase one, FEMA's indicated that they don't have too much heartburn about those, repairing the pumps. They're under review for the repairs to the fairway and bunkers.
So if FEMA would come in, is that 100% on the, or what's the...
No, FEMA pays 75, state pays 12 and 1/2, and then we pay 12 and 1/2.
For the pumps?
Correct.
The second part that was just added today, what, what is that?
The modifications you made today.
I don't know when you last looked at this, but it's been a working document for about three weeks. So today, we clarified with Landscape Unlimited who would own it in the event we don't do phase two, for example. We jointly own it, and we can use the design for phase two and have somebody else do it, for example, or not having to do all the work that's involved in phase two. So we clarified that today. Over the course of Friday, we clarified, you know, liquidated damages, payment, substantial completion date, things of that nature. So we didn't add anything today. We just worked back and forth on terms because they sent another version of me. I think Wednesday, I sent it on Thursday, they sent it to me Friday. I worked with them today to finish it up. It's a different agreement than we've done before because it's a design-build. They design it, and then we essentially decide if we're going to build it.
So we're talking 12 and 1/2% of 192,000?
Yes, for phase one.
Yeah.
Well, I want to be very, very clear. This, this is not 100% that 12 and 1/2%. We're on the hook for a whole 192,500 with the anticipation that FEMA will come back, and, and we are reasonably assured that FEMA, that it's not guaranteed by any means, folks, but it is a repair that we have to do. We, we got to get it done. That's why we're going with the phase one only, and then if FEMA funding comes through, then we can look at phase two after that fact. And then it'll also include phase one, so they'll back, backload the, our expenses on phase one if FEMA funding does come through.
Then, does the state only step in if FEMA does?
I would imagine yes.
Okay. So, like you said, we could be on the hook for it all, but we've got to get those pumps fixed.
And they did agree to keep an August date for getting the pumps in and, and done?
I just want to clarify with the pumps. If FEMA didn't exist, this would be something we have to do. So this is kind of where they said, proceed as if FEMA doesn't exist. This is where we need to get going on the pumps, at least, so.
Yep, and if phase two, you know, we'll get, we'll hopefully get some direction from FEMA at some point in time. Worst case FEMA doesn't, or they, they declined to fund the phase two, we can still move forward with staff. It'll just take five or six years to do it. That's why ownership of the design was important to us, anyway, so that we could still continue to use that design in the future, just in case FEMA fucks.
Yeah, so on phase two, if FEMA doesn't want to pay $5,000 for something in the project, and they think it's $3,000, we could opt out of that $5,000, that, that piece of it, for example, or we could decide we're going to do it, but then we would be on the hook for the $5,000. So they will give us in the design build, here's what the cost estimates are for phase two. FEMA looks at phase two and says, this is how much we'll reimburse. This isn't covered, and then at that time, you'll have another agreement on phase two and say, this is what we want to do, and make that decision of the rest.
Lisa, can they do a line-by-line veto of different items in the proposals?
That's my understanding of what they're going to do on phase two, is to come back and say, this, this is going to cost this much, this is going to cost this much, this is the sand we're putting in on this, and they'll do a line-by-line. I've been told that's what they're going to do, and then we submit that to FEMA, and FEMA says, yes, I like this sand, or I don't like this sand, it's not the right kind of sand, and you can't get that much money for this kind of sand, that type of thing. So FEMA will look at the line-by-line, decide what's within FEMA reimbursable, decide if the amount that they say that, that Landscape Unlimited says it's going to cost to do number 83 is that much money, or you know what, it's not that much money, this is how much money we're going to give you. So then, when we get that for design for phase two, we'll have what FEMA's going to give us, and we'll decide what we're going to do with phase two, with a new agreement.
So, so why will they commit on phase two and tell us, but on phase one, we're kind of guessing that they're going to...
No, phase, phase one is pumps. They've indicated to us that the pumps, they haven't written us a letter saying, yes, go ahead and do it, but in discussions with FEMA staff, they're fairly comfortable that it's necessary. The other stuff, the drainage, the reshaping of bunkers, what happens is Landscape's Unlimited and their consultant will put together design, ship the cost estimate down to FEMA in Texas where their estimators are, and they will take a look at that and go, okay, you're putting in 5,000 yards of sand. Well, geez, sand is only, you know, if you give pit run sand, it's only five bucks a ton. Why is your cost estimate 10 bucks a ton? Because it's bunker sand, so it's been, it's a little different than, than pit sand. Just like McCarty Road, you know, we repaved McCarty Road due to the washout. We submitted a reimbursement to FEMA, and FEMA came back and said, no, we're not going to reimburse you for that road, basically because we didn't have pictures of the road prior to the flood.
Or maintenance.
Or maintenance records.
Records.
So we will ship that estimate down. FEMA will go through it, and they will, line-by-line, they will say, here's what we will reimburse for this improvement.
If we're in a perfect world, yes, I would like this, that we had the letter from FEMA first, and then we went ahead. We're not in a perfect world, folks. We got to get going on these, these necessary repairs. So what we're doing tonight is approving phase one in an amount not to exceed 192,500 with the anticipation that a portion will be reimbursed through FEMA and the state, and the design of phase two, which will become our property, and we will proceed after we receive a letter, so I'd entertain a motion as such.
Okay.
Motion is second to approve, uh, phase one in amount not to exceed 192,500, design-build contract with Landscapes Limited. Any further questions? All in, yes, real quick.
When do we expect to make a notice middle to FEMA, uh, phase two? In other words, also, when do you expect to have more information, I guess, Lisa?
Um, we actually hope to get the entire project done by the end of November, so we anticipate getting the design for phase two, hopefully by the end of the month, and then that gets sent down to FEMA, and they're hoping to get a turnaround from FEMA within a couple weeks, and then if so, we'll know, and I can come back before you and say, here's the contractor, phase two, and they can possibly get phase two done by, I think we put November 1st or something. Initially, I mean, that's what they're wanting to do. We're not assessing liquidated damages until June 1st, though, but they, they're hoping, under the timeline we're giving them, that they can get everything done. We'll have an approval, get everything done, and have everything done by the end of the year. But if weather doesn't work out that way, or FEMA doesn't work out, June 1st is what we put in there for liquidated damages if we don't otherwise.
Let me tell you a reality, Jack. Add eight weeks to everything that she's saying.
Yeah, I mean, FEMA has the cost estimate, so they've had it for months.
FEMA, FEMA has a general idea.
Yeah, they know.
But just, just as a word of caution, in a phone conversation we had with city administrators last week, Amy in Yankton brought up that they're still dealing with FEMA reimbursement from the flood from two years ago. So FEMA is probably going to be the, the largest sticking point in the project.
But again, we don't have to pay out that, we don't have to do the $800,000 project until we have FEMA's commitment on the $800,000 that potentially is out there. Because if you remember, this was kind of a, might be a $1.1 million if we did everything right now, but we're just doing phase one of the 200,000-ish, and then we'll look at the 900,000 later after we get this design done.
Okay. Thank you.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, under Parks and Rec, we have a request for alcohol in McCarty Park for, from a Serena Room, Room, R-O-U-M, on August 8, 2020.
Mayor Serena is here, so any questions?
Okay.
Council has.
I'd entertain a motion on the request as presented.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion is second to approve the request for alcohol on August 8, 2020, from Serena Room. I'm apologizing if I hammer in your name. R-O-U-M, I'll just say. Questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question, if you don't mind coming up. Um, a couple of us, I think, were just curious on our briefing meeting to the duration, because it's a pretty long time, just having alcohol available for...
Yeah.
Seven hours at a city park. We're kind of like, just a little curious about why so long.
Well, I told everybody it'll start at 3:30 because I have time to set up and everything, and it ends at 7:30, but I put 9:00 just so I can clean up and everything, too. Yeah.
Good. Any other questions for Serena? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Christina, call the roll, please, I think.
Clark.
Aye.
David.
May.
Fish.
Aye.
Aye.
Cole.
Aye.
Parliament.
Aye.
Motion carries. Five, one. Thank you. Uh, item B3 is a wage adjustment for Corey Carlson at $23.71 an hour. I got a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, uh, Corey Carlson wage adjustment to $23.71 an hour. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. B4, we have a request to sell concessions at McCarty Park from, uh, and I'll probably hammer this name, too. I apologize in advance. Nazli Parades. It's a Hispanic Soccer League event on August 15th, 29th, and, and September 5th.
Correct.
If I could have a motion to approve them to sell concessions on those dates.
I'll move. Second.
Motion is second to approve Nazli Parades on August 15th, 29th, and September 5th for, to sell concession. Any questions from the council? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under Public Safety, we have our quarterly report from MedStar. Mr. Major, I think I, you get the mic. Also, feel free to ask Mr. Major any questions that you might have on his, I think we had a hard copy of the report last meeting, and, uh...
We didn't, and I apologize for not being here when that was delivered, but, um, in my line of work, I don't really have the opportunity to make my own schedule, but if you have some questions, I'm willing to answer those for you.
I think the only one I had was from the handouts, which I don't have in front of me, but there was, uh, in the prior quarter, I think, one of the months, was it February, that didn't have on the report the number of paramedics staffed runs?
Paramedics staffed runs?
Yeah.
100%.
100% in the first quarter, every month?
Since the beginning of the year.
Okay.
Since we've started, almost since the onset of MedStar, but yes. You're welcome.
Anything else from the council?
I guess I could just add a couple of things, if you don't mind.
Sure.
With the street dance out here, I just talked to those gentlemen, and we're, we'll take our 911 truck and set that down here during that four or five-hour period that they're going to have their street dance, and we'll, we'll run calls from that point there. Houston Speedway, obviously, has opened, and that has been absolutely fantastic for the city of Brandon. Tony Stewart, actually, we're going to have him come here and visit you guys, but if you've seen the picture of what he looks like right now, he had a little accident, and I can't, you saw the picture. But, um, anyway, someday we'll try and get him here because I think he'd be good for this community, too. But, um, as far as our ambulance service goes, just some of the updates. Um, we, um, we've added, uh, two more paramedics. Um, they're both flight medics with Sanford Air Care that are working for us now, uh, part-time, 24-hour, um, 24 hours a week, basically 12-hour shifts. Um, we've added one more truck to our fleet. With this COVID thing, um, it's been real tough for every business to operate, including ours, because we, although our 911 business is thriving, that's not where the money is, and our transfer business went kind of right down the tubes along with everything else, transit, the wheelchair stuff. So it's been a struggle for us as well as everybody else. We're not here complaining because everybody's in the same boat here, um, but we're still making things work, and we plan on, we plan on going forward with, uh, we love Brandon, and I mean that sincerely. So I appreciate the opportunity to stand here and speak with you guys. Thank you very much for your help in keeping us, uh, in business here, and, uh, that's about all I got.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, we have a wage adjustment for Jamie Steffel to $35.50 an hour.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Motion is second to approve the wage adjustment for Jamie, Jamie Steffel to $35.50 an hour. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a request from the administration, uh, police administration to donate some, uh, surplus light-bar apparatuses on police cars to Kingsbury County. If I got a motion to approve that?
I'll second.
Motion is second to prove, approve, uh, some surplus light bars from old police cars to Kingsbury County for their use. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. D1, we have a parking lot agreement with Lee Skelling. Uh, it was with the Holly Boulevard reconstruction project that he had parking lot that, uh, we did not replace due to the coming back in, and he was going to do some more stuff, and we had a kind of a verbal agreement to reimburse him the cost of what we were going to do when we were building Holly Boulevard, and that is this agreement here. It's a agreement to pay him $24,200, which is the same amount that we would have expended when we were building Holly Boulevard.
Correct.
Everybody good? If I could have a motion to approve?
I'll have that one.
One of you guys second it.
Oh, second.
Motion is second to approve the agreement with Lee Skelling in the amount of $24,200 as presented. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D2, a Holly Boulevard pond concept plan. Tammy, I'm going to have you take that over, or Brian, whichever. Tammy?
Um, the owners are here. What they're proposing is to have a sand pit on the north side of Holly Boulevard. They would mine it for seven to 10 years, and then they would develop it into a residential area, kind of mixed-use area.
Any questions or concerns from the council at this time on that project?
And they're interested in annexing into the city, correct?
Correct. Yep.
I'd like to hear a couple.
Suri, would you like to come on up?
Sure.
Give us a summary of your plans.
Uh, name's Harold Gaden.
Mr. Martin.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, name's Harold Gaden.
Eric Willitsen, Willitsen, London Engineering. We developed the concept plan for, uh, Mr. Gaden for the, the pond. Uh, we brought this to the planning commission in July with the, it's kind of a two-phased plan to, number one, extract the sand. We've done, uh, about 20 borings out there on the property, um, and the plan would be, as Harold said, to, what you asked, to annex the property into the city of, uh, Brandon. Harold's already secured a mining permit from the state, and... Harold's already secured a mining permit from the state, and would come in there, we, we did, like I said, two concept plans, one for the, for the sand mine with birmingham around it, trees, uh, to screen it from, from traffic. There's also railroad, uh, I think it's Ellis Eastern, that is just north of it, also been in contact with, with them. About a future crossing, as well as they may be interested in purchasing some of the sand. And then, depending on how long it takes to, uh, extract the sand, then it would then, uh, be developed into a, a mixed-use type thing, probably maybe some multifamily, uh, potentially a commercial corner, and then a residential around what will be a, a lake or, or pond. There is water there, uh, we found in the borings. We are not in the floodplain, uh, we're not gonna work or, or extract any sand out of the floodplain area, uh, the Big Sioux River, uh, that's indicated on the, on the map. Uh, we still have to maintain access to the private residence that's in there right now, and we, you know, plan to do that. I guess before, a- and I don't wanna speak for Harold, he can, uh, before we jump, he jumps in with both feet and gets us done, we're, we're kinda looking for some, uh, feedback from council, and, and we got some really good feedback from your planning commission. Uh, we've talked to the developers adjacent, uh, they seem, uh, on board with the project, so with that, I guess Harold can add to that, or you can, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Uh, he operates a couple of sand mines right now on Rice Street, and would be happy to explain, you know, what the operation's about, and if you would like to see one, um, you know, what, what he does, and how they work, uh, and how it would affect city of Brandon, and it obviously would annex and, and the sale of the sand would, would, uh, be taxed, and sales tax would
Come to you by annex in this, to Brandon.
Sales tax will come to Brandon instead of wherever I deliver it to.
So that would be one of the pluses for you guys.
Any concerns on water sewer with the annexation, Brian? I don't know, is there, is that a water-intensive?
Nope, uh, you know, the sand, the sand mine part, but I don't think you have any issues with water sewer. Sounds like you have plenty of water in the pond.
Yep.
As, as it gets developed into residential and commercial, they would need to come forward with engineering plans and a preliminary plan that would show all of the, the infrastructure that would go with place.
So we have no need to get infrastructure out there? I would assume that we don't have it there now, since it's not annexed, obviously.
We don't, um, there's been a plan in place for a long time. We have that lift station just west of the Big Sioux on the south side of Holly.
Okay.
That's, that's there with the intention that eventually there will be a sewer line that goes up through this property.
Okay. And you guys are all right with that, we don't have?
Yes, yes, that's fine, we figured, you know, seven to eight years to mine the sand is, is a product with timeframe. Uh, we, we have a mine on Rice Street now, which was behind concrete materials, and, uh, we use the amount of sand we use every day, and that pit's gonna be drying up in the next year, year and a half. We figured out how much sand we're selling out of there a year, and it'll, it'll put a timeframe on this, cause I did borings and calculated how much sand's in the deal, and it's about a ten-year project. If I were to mine the whole thing and not the development work, we're gonna shrink the mine down, it's cause we wanna leave some development ground in it.
I think some of our preliminary paperwork or whatever said you'd be mining sand for approximately seven years, something like that?
Yeah, and, uh, and what's nice about the deal, it's on a truck route. So when we have trucks, we're gonna, the majority of the sand's gonna get on Rice Street, go to one hundred, and disperse from there. Unless we're gonna use it in Brandon or on a job in this area, but the majority of the sand will go to one hundred.
So do you have to, uh, build like a little temporary, you know, some kind of little office with restrooms or for your people? Or it's just gonna be the pit?
What will be, they will put a scale in with a small scale house. Uh, the one on Rice Street that I got going now, we put a bathroom with a holding tank in the scale house, so if a truck driver needs it, you do, they don't have to go to the gas station. I prefer have them use it there than at the gas station, but the thing's only like fourteen by twelve, and it looks like a little trailer.
A question for staffer Lisa, what is the process for annexation?
Pretty simple, the property owner, uh, provides us with a very simple one-page petition for annexation with the property description on it, and then it comes in front, since it's a voluntary annexation, comes in front of the city council. Well, we take it to the Planning and Zoning Commission first, it's not required, but we get their recommendation, and it comes in front of the city council and is, uh, next by resolution, then we file that resolution with the county and the state.
So I'm just trying to get a visual, I don't, I don't know what was mined out of Aspen Pond? What was, same thing, okay, so it's kinda similar to theirs, what you're thinking down the future or down the road, but mixed with businesses too, you said, commercial?
Yeah, if you look on page ninety-five,
Okay.
it's, it's kind of the concept plan for the redevelopment of the, of the property. If you look in the frontage on Holly, it's, it's noted as central business or residential high district or high density. So CBGB is business, so on those nodes along Holly, where it makes sense for maybe a convenience store, something like that, those would be the nodes for commercial. Everything else is, is apartments in the city.
So I'm happy that you wanna annex in, I appreciate that, but my question is why? Wouldn't it be easier to work with the county?
No, actually, I have, I have, I have two mines in the city of Sioux Falls, and it's easier to, to, to work it through the city. And the, the best thing, this pit's in Brandon area, and if I annex the sales tax company, if I don't, it's gonna go to city of Sioux Falls. I work in Brandon for you guys and done jobs for you guys, we, there's no reason I don't annex it into Brandon.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You know, and, and, and it's, you're right, it's, it's actually easier to do the zoning through cities than it is county.
Next steps once it's annexed? And there's no action needed by the council on the concept plan, it's just kind of information. The next steps would be certainly a petition for annexation, and then we would run at the same time, uh, change the zoning on it to heavy industrial to allow the, the mining, and then I believe a conditional use permit is required for for the mining in, yeah, so there's a couple steps here, uh, but planning and zoning will handle. The conditional use permit, the, obviously, the, the resolution for annexation and the amendment to the zoning code to rezone the property would come in front of the city council.
So do we have to have a public hearing for that? I mean, do we anticipate any concern with the neighbors or anything?
Uh, you know, there's, there's always concerns, um, with neighbors, but yes, there would be two public, three, actually, three public hearings. There'd be a public hearing in front of the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission on the rezone, there'd be a, a public hearing in front of the city council on the rezone, and there'd be a public hearing in front of the city, or the Planning and Zoning Commission for the conditional use permit, so there'd be three, three public hearings in the process.
How far off the road is it gonna be, how far back?
Do you have that?
Our sightlines?
Slide of the mine itself. Shows the birmingham outside of it, and
There, there is, yeah.
Right.
So, you know, that heavy green lines of berm that we put along Rice Street that we can build up, put a few trees on, and that will give it, uh, so when you drive down the road and the people sit there, they don't look right into the pit, you know? And then when we develop it, then we'll use that dirt, or maybe the berm will stay there and shade department. We haven't decided what we, how we want to do that exactly, but we figured we wanted to put up some kind of birmingham and some kind of screen for the public overall. Uh, to the, to the west, the, the guy is, uh, putting out building storage garage is there, and then we have the power company building there. And to the east, we have the river, and then the back, we have the Ellison Eastern, so there's not a lot of screening in those two areas that we have to do.
And one thing Christina just reminded me of, we've talked with, about putting in a, a living snow fence along this section of road, cause it always drifts in, you know, with the berm and, and the trees, it would certainly help with the drifting on that road that, that our communities experience on a regular basis.
You will be our human snow fence. The only thing I can see in this whole project that I would come back to you in the future with is dust control. And that, that being the road, uh, you know, I don't see, there's not gonna be dust from you guys pulling sand out, but I can see it from the road going back, back and forth with your trucks.
We, we have our other pits, and what we do is we have, um, put dust control on the road coming in and out of the pit, cause, uh, cause what, what we'll do is we'll probably, this is what I foresee are my plans on doing. When I get the pit started, I'm gonna put a scale in, and I'm gonna pave the road from the scale to, to access on Rice Street. Okay, now eliminate ninety percent of the dust, then the rest of the pit, if there's a road in the pit, we just have Bumblebee come and do dust control on it a couple times a year, and it keeps the majority down. Our pit out at the west, uh, is by Buffalo Ridge, we have a half mile of road going into the pit, and we dust control it twice a year, usually the first one is about May fifteenth, the first of June, because that's when it starts getting a little dry, and then the second one, we just did in August here.
Sure.
And then by then, usually fall is good enough, we don't have a lot of trouble.
You know what you're doing.
We, we've been operating pits and reclaiming pits for a long time, I probably reclaimed over three hundred acres of sand and gravel pits.
And again, if you're interested in seeing the operation?
We're, we're more to show you what we got going and what pits we got going now, so.
Yes, kinda the main reason we're here is before he jumps in with both feet, um, and annexes, and, and because I'm sure the farmer doesn't wanna annex if this isn't gonna happen, um, we're kinda looking for some, uh, feedback as to, you know, what you think.
I'm hearing no formal opposition from this council, uh, if I'm remiss in that, please speak up now.
I have lots of questions, but no opposition.
Very good.
And any questions you got, you know, you can email us too, and we'll try to get you answers for anything you want, too.
I think you can answer. You mentioned the residential, keeping the road open to the residents, how long does Dan plan to live there, the family plans to live there? What's, what's the plan there?
Oh, that back resident?
Yeah.
See, if you, if you look on the east side, that you, you'll see that road that goes back to the back resident there, and he's one of the owners that we're buying the property from. Okay, and he's in favor of this project, and there's a private crossing across the rail there.
Yeah.
Uh, the road goes straight right now, but our new concept is to move the road off, and they don't have no problem with that. They're supporting us on the whole project.
Okay, uh, Eric, you mentioned, uh, uh, crossing across the tracks for Ellison, is that the crossing you're talking about?
Um, probably not, it would probably be further to the, to the west. Ellison Eastern is, and we, Harold talked to him, they're, like I said, open to, you know, some kind of a crossing in the future to get to the north side of, of the tracks. The private crossing obviously is owned by that residence, and, and whether that could become a public one, no, don't know. But certainly there's, uh, at least, they've, they've been made aware of what we're doing and, and said, yeah, we'd be interested in talking about a crossing as well as maybe purchasing some sand. I mean, the rail cars fall sand by there all day, so.
Yeah, um, so how far on the north side of the tracks is the, is this purchase? Is this up to the river there, or it's, I can't remember how the river runs?
We don't, we don't own anything on the north side.
No, it wouldn't go across the tracks, just all stay south of the tracks.
Okay, so I'm confused, why would you need a crossing?
It's just for future access for, there's still land between there and the interstate.
Okay.
And if we develop this, we have to be able to know if we can get access to the other side of the tracks. So the people that live on the other side, if they ever divide it up, it's gonna wanna be developed or put back into the city limits. It takes a crossing to get across that.
And I think Tammy actually asked us if we would investigate that to see if we could do some kind of crossing in the future, and so we asked.
So if we develop that seven years down the road, and them roads go back to the rail, well, where's Ellison Eastern gonna want us to cross to, to get to the back to develop the back in some day?
I'll just give you a word of warning, don't assume that if you put a private crossing in, that automatically can become a public.
No, I, I know that, I've, I've
I.e., uh, Pasley Park.
But, but, my, uh, my pit on Rice Street, I, I gotta, I crossed Ellison Eastern and Burlington. And it, it takes a lot of coordination, yes.
And then there's the, the floodway zone, what's the plan for that?
Uh, our, our future plan down the road is, we're hoping to give it to the game fishing parks. They own the stuff on the north side of the bridge, right now, coming down there, and I think, being it's pretty tough on the river there, that might be the place for me to put that. While I'm doing the sand mine, I don't, I'm gonna just kinda leave it the way it is.
And obviously, we can't do anything in the floodway, um, and there's just a little strip kind of floodplain actually there.
So in the floodplain there, I, I don't wanna put it in there, cause while I'm doing this sand abstract, I might be pumping water in the river, and then if I give it to the game fishing parks before I get the permit and stuff to do that, that could be a lot more difficult for me to do, because then I have to deal with another entity. So after we get the mine going, and we're done with the mine, we start doing development, that is the time we have to address the floodplain stuff, what we can do, cause when we get it all developed, I really don't wanna own the stuff along the river. Now, if the city of Brandon would want that ground, oh, you have to raise your deal, I'm sure you don't, it's just a lot of high maintenance. And they would make it, they would make something out of it, yes, they'd put a hiking trail or whatever in there, so.
Possible extension of Big Sioux?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, so.
And you mentioned something about Ellison Eastern, also about, uh, possibility of hauling sand? I think, or is that too short a haul, what do you think, what's your thoughts on that?
I didn't catch that.
Any possibility of the, of putting a rail spur in there and hauling sand into town, is that just more or less too short?
The rail spur, the only way that would happen is like Ellison Eastern, they, they're owned by Knife Forever now, and it, it would be to their expense to put a knife, that's because they, they gotta test the sand, and if the sand's right kind of sand, they're interested in buying. Then whether they wanna put a spur in, or Ellison Eastern ain't that busy a track, they might just load it on that track, cause that track's actually a spur to them right now.
Okay. Thanks, thanks a lot.
You bet.
We're good, thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Thank you for your investment.
We will, we proceed then.
Think, yeah, I don't know what the procedure for annexation, how soon that can happen, but I would think you wanna do that as soon as we need to
Happen whenever you want it to.
We would like it to happen sooner or later, cause I'd like it to be done by November.
We will send you a very complicated petition.
But it has to be best to be flat first?
No, it doesn't matter, cause you're annexing the entire parcel, so.
Send it to me, Brian, caught Harold on it, and we'll get it filled out and try and get this thing moving as quick as we can.
We'll get it turned up. So when do you plan to start extracting sand, or, or next year?
After, after, no, after November, if we get it all done and, and I close on the property by November, then I'm gonna start this fall building the berms and getting the site ready. I, it will be probably later next summer before I have everything in place ready to start the sand.
So basically, you could probably, after the crops are out, you could probably start working it if you
Right, as soon as the crops go out, then I can start building the berms, I gotta build the berms and get the, the deal and strip the pit, get everything's scale put in, a scale house put in, to make it all work right, so.
And we'll be using the same access point, I, or no, or no, you're gonna do a different access point? I don't know if we need to come back in for that, cause that, you're not gonna use his driveway.
No, there's another driveway over by that.
Further over, yeah, we would be used for the trucks.
We'll be using the, uh, existing entrance into the Rice Street that's already there. There's, there's one where his driveway is, and there is one farther down the road. That just dead ends into that property, there used to be an old pit there before.
Trying to picture that, where that another entrance is.
Uh, it's, it's just to the east of the apartment building, uh, probably a couple hundred feet east.
Okay, yeah.
It's, yeah, it's just a field driveway.
But, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item D three, we have resolution nineteen dash twenty, setting the fine amount for mowing, Brian, you wanna summarize?
Yeah, we talked about it meeting ago, two meetings ago, um, about implementing a fine structure for those properties that, uh, are not in compliance with tall grass regulations. We cur, our process now is, if we get a complaint, building inspector will go and take a look at it, if it's in excess of the six-inch requirement, uh, we give them three days' notice to, to mow, if it doesn't get mowed, we can then go in and mow the property for them. We charge two hundred and fifty dollars an hour with one hour minimum to mow the property. Christina went and, and contacted, or sent out on the listserv anyway, what other communities do and what they charge. do and what they charge. You know, it's basically time, time and materials with either contractor or city personnel and everybody has kind of a minimum of an hour. You know, our chink in this instance has been follow-up. So I'm working with staff to make sure that after that three-day notice expires and it's not mowed, that we will get in there on day four, depending on what, it's not a weekend. But we need to get out there on a more regular basis to get it mowed. So the fines, I think Sioux Falls is the only one that fines anybody. Everybody else just charges the hundred to a hundred and fifty bucks an hour.
One thing this all started, I know, I believe you said it was a three-day, three days to mow once we know. So our protocol, I would hope, do we, like, once that letter goes out, then is a letter sent to the Parks Department saying, heads up, we have this letter to this resident, you may have to mow on day four, we'll let you know? Because I know, and the resident that contacted me a year ago, they've been dealing with this for probably three years, back and forth, and you know, Brian. I know they've spoke with you several times. And I feel for their frustrations. They've lived in the community for almost sixty years and they just feel like they're not being heard. So I, so I, looking at this, I thought, well, maybe the ordinance need to change so we could enforce it. But now looking at it and I see the data and I actually called Brookings and Mitchell today to kind of figure out what they charge as well. And I don't really think, I think our ordinance probably is pretty good, it's just the enforcement. Yep. Because July sixth, they spoke to us and it wasn't until July twenty-eighth that something was done by the city. And I think that's unacceptable.
It is, it is.
So that's my way of thinking here is, is it, where in the breakdown? Is it just not being enforced? Is the Parks Department just being told last minute to do something and then they have to delay it because they have responsibilities too? I just don't know.
No, Parks Department's pretty flexible. In this instance, notices were given and then the occupants of the property, not the property owner, would kind of do enough to maybe mow it down or knock it down. And it just continued to compound over time. So those weeds that they didn't quite get to or didn't quite get trimmed, continued to grow, obviously.
But my way of thinking then, if it's not to our standards, we just go in. Because I only know from my own experience and being in the classroom, if I, as a teacher, let something slip, it just, you're right, it's a domino effect. And so I feel with this, if it's not to the city's standards, a day four, I don't care if you mowed a little bit, if it's not to what we want, we go in there and they get, I mean, that's just what I feel.
And that's been my instructions to staff now, is we give them the notice, we give the property owner notice as well as the occupant if it's a rental. And then after day three, we go back and take a look at it and if it's not done, we get in and mow it.
You know, and I do have to say kudos to them, Interior Department. I know there was four people out there doing that. I did drive by when I got back from vacation. It looks amazing. You can tell when it's done correctly, so good job. I suppose it wasn't easy.
The other thing with fine versus mowing costs, if we send them a bill for mowing costs and it doesn't get paid, we just special assess it against the property. Pretty simple process. We certify those every year with collection for them in property taxes the next year. County will do that for free. If it's a fine and they don't pay the fine, then we have to go through the court system to get judgment. So the assessment process is easier.
Yeah, I think it's, Christine, that's what we spoke about. So basically our ordinance is fine, probably the way it is. It's just the fact that we need to enforce it.
Yep.
The system is broken down, so we just have to fix it, okay?
So I would guess, I would guess our goal is that we don't hear from that particular family again, that they're not being taken care of.
Correct.
Okay, that would be great.
I'm hearing there's no appetite for the adoption of resolution nineteen dash twenty. Is that accurate?
I would agree.
Moving forward, under Street Department, we have a curb repair project bid. We have a low bid from D and K Construction for sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. I got a motion to approve low bid. Motion to second to approve low bid from D and K Construction for sixty-seven thousand nine thirty-six fifty. Any questions?
Yeah, one quick one. Where is this? I'm sorry, I'm the new guy again.
So we do an annual curb repair project in this area, it's gonna be in Stone Ridge and the French Creek area.
Which is where?
So Stone Ridge is north of, like, BNSF railroad tracks, north of.
The tracks.
North of the fire, north of the fire hall.
Fire hall, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And French Creek is east of McDonald's.
Yeah.
Are there further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a request from administration to declare a surplus property, a plate packer. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to second to approve as surplus, a plate packer is designated by the administration. Any questions?
Is that going in with the lag bars or no? No, okay.
U-Haul. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any update on a tree waste site?
Staff, Parks and Public Works are working on a plan to possibly open one up.
Wage adjustment for Mark Schmeling to twenty-three dollars and fifty cents an hour. A motion?
Second.
Motion to second to adjust the wage of Mark Schmeling to twenty-three fifty an hour. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tall Grass Low Impact Drainage Project. Tammy, Brian.
So this is Tall Grass Addition Development. Just a little bit of background on this. This is by Redwood and Pask Flower. When they sent in review plans, when the developer sent in review plans, I think we were kind of in between engineers and we had an engineering firm review this. And the original plan in that northwest corner, there's a really small lot up there. That original plan had a detention pond kind of mapped out in that area. There was some concerns with that detention pond, just because it's really hard with the grades out there to get the water to that detention pond. Plus, it's another pond in the city of Brandon that has the mosquitoes and has the, kind of the same maintenance problems that the rest of them do. And so our engineer requested that they change some of the grading in here to eliminate that detention pond. And so if you look at the plan sheet that I handed out, this is out of their set of plans that was reviewed and approved. If you see that yellow line through there, that's the existing line. So everything to the east of that line flows east and everything to the west of that line flows west. That's what's there before it was developed. Then after it's developed, you can see there's this really small blue line. And everything east of that flows east and everything west of that flows west. And so that area was really cut in half. Now, when we do drainage calc, there's a few things that aren't really accounted for. One is that there was vegetation out there and so a lot of that water gets kind of soaked up by that vegetation. Plus, there was a big hole out there, so a lot of that water would sit in that hole and then naturally infiltrate, so there probably wasn't a whole lot of runoff. Now that it's developed, that hole has been filled in, so we don't have that detention time or that infiltration anymore, as well as that land is disturbed. And so when that water runs off, that grass isn't catching it and that water is also dirtier. So what's flowing off to the west, it's less water, but it's flowing faster and it's dirty because it's, there's no vegetation out there yet. And so the neighbors to the west there noticed that change and brought that concern to the city. We did speak with Confluence because they do a lot of kind of that low-impact design type of kind of issue management there. And they came up with a concept plan that's on page one oh seven and one oh eight of the packet. And it just incorporates some of those infiltration qualities as well as, if you look at that west edge, it's pretty steep through there. And so this would act more as kind of a retaining wall off of the end of that road. I did send this plan to over ten contractors because it is pretty specialized. There's not a lot of these type of projects out there. The city of Sioux Falls has done a couple and so I made sure to send it to those contractors and most of them came in, about over eighty thousand, and I was only able to find one contractor that actually did the other projects in Sioux Falls and they did a really good job and they came in under that fifty thousand. So it's kind of the only solution that we could find, but again, the current plan does meet design standards and it was approved by the city engineer at the time.
Tammy, when this is no longer dirt and it's seeded and landscaped and there's vegetation there, then am I correct in understanding that even less water would flow to the west at that point?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think you'd notice it as much. I think that west end definitely has some challenges because it is so steep, so. Once it does rain, it is going to get to the west side quicker than what it did before.
So your recommendation, proceed?
Would be to proceed. And this isn't a fix-all, it's one of those projects that's gonna pick up those low-flow events, so like the five-year, the ten-year event. We really designed for that five-year, but we also modeled that hundred-year flow event. So if there's a lot of rainfall and then some of it's still going to go on to that neighboring property, because that's just the natural flow path.
Recommendation, administration is proceed with Sukup Construction to develop and build this retention, drainage.
Infiltration pond.
Infiltration system in the amount of forty-nine thousand eighty-seven dollars. Motion, my call? Second by Parliament. Any further questions?
So where in the budget does this money come from?
So we have some drainage funds and in there we did have some zero scapeing money in there, so this meets some of that requirement and it is low-impact design. So if we do this, then I would definitely be taking pictures throughout of making sure that developers know that this type of design is out there and that we should be utilizing it more. So it would come out of that fund, I suppose.
Initially, the developers, when they did these first ones that you're talking about? So typically this is something that the developer would do, not something the city would have to do?
Correct.
I guess I would have a lot easier time getting behind this if what we had done caused more water to go to the west, but if we've eliminated half of the water and once it's seeded, it's gonna eliminate even more water, I guess I really struggle spending taxpayer dollars on one property when it meets design standards. I think we're really setting a precedent by doing that.
Because I don't know the history on all this, but I thought you mentioned that the city approved a design that basically didn't work. Am I correct in that assumption or not?
I think, I think there was some conversations about this before, that no water would go on to the neighboring properties once this was developed and that's not true. There is a natural flow path through there and anytime you have a natural flow path, that's where the water is gonna continue to go. And the neighbor's property is lower than Redwood, so there is no way to even put in like an area drain to pick that up and then bring it into our storm sewer, which would be in Redwood. We've kind of gone back and forth on all of it. It does meet design standards and the developer did exactly what the city requested them to do. So it does work.
Who told them that there'd be no water? I mean, the city wouldn't have said that, would they?
Can we enter the budget at this point? Where the property owners to the west?
Sure, come on up to. Come to the mic.
To change your question, we were initially told by Todd Stone in this room.
We were told by Todd Stone in this room several years ago and it's documented in The Challenger with headlines that says they will not let anybody push water onto our property, so.
Mayor Todd Wendy Ramsey on Crestview Circle. Also, yeah, there may have been a changeover in the engineer and that's not our fault. This all started way back with Doug Metcalf and it's been documented in the city council minutes with different things and different plans for that property. And, like she said, there used to be a hole there, a large hole. Doug Metcalf took out a whole bunch of dirt, left himself a big old hole. Then he tried to come over to our property and tell us that we were required to allow a swale through our yard, which was a complete lie. And we came and talked to the city immediately and we were told that is not true. The minute he adjusted his property, he now has to live with that and the water has to flow the way it's supposed to and it was deemed that it has to flow to the east. So now, I went to see Tammy, April twenty nineteen, before anything was approved, and I said, we have concerns about what this is gonna look like, how they're gonna make that water run that way because we were already told it's supposed to run that way, and what was gonna happen. And pleased to keep an eye on it and I know the city has had a lot going on. And then all of a sudden, we were just trying to lay back and watch things happen. Next thing you know, they're building up the dirt on our end and it's, you walk out there and there used to be even and the hole over there and now we're looking at an eight-foot wall of dirt. And there's nothing natural about it and at one point it was called a ditch. And I said, this is not a ditch, this is a residential property line. We have one acre there and we want to protect our investment in our property.
And the other thing is, is the water that does flow through, I've shared it with Dave, I've shared it with Brian.
Dave's been to our house.
With Tammy. I've shared it with the mayor, I've shared it with the mayor as well. We have a video from last year about this time and if you wanna see what's actually happening there when it rains, I can show it to you. It's quite amazing.
Ah, we don't.
Can I approach?
It's soggy and sloggy and extensive.
Have you seen the river flowing through our yard? That's what it is. There's a river flowing through our yard when we have a rain event.
We have lived in Brandon for thirty years. We have lived at that property for about fifteen and we pay property taxes on an acre of our property in Brandon and we would like to protect that investment.
And we had an eight-foot wall built there and just recently, I mean, there were four-foot thistles sitting there that we had to talk to Brian about. Brian got it taken care of, thank you for doing that. But there were four-foot thistles that were sitting there on our property line that we just had to sit and look at as residents of.
Again, we tried, we let it slide a bit thinking they'll be good neighbors and come take care of it, so we waited.
We welcome the neighborhood there, we welcome all the homes that are there. We just feel that we've got a real bad drainage situation that has been created by the project.
And literally this wall, if you come, please come visit our property. I asked some people last year to do that. It goes like this and it goes right up to the edge of our property. So this is what we ended up with from a flat piece of ground next to us. So who built that again? Like, who did this wall? Was it the developer or who did that?
Right, the developer did. They built that section up so that a lot of that water would flow back to the east and not to the west.
And so there's no setback. I mean, I don't know what all, we had some of the rules, we printed them and then we were told at one point there really were no, what was it, regulations. And your own, your own thing say that you follow the city of Sioux Falls, you know, rules.
I mean, ideally.
So there's rules and this is not a ditch and it's gotta have a setback of some sort.
It's similar to what happened to the Atlas property over here with paste manufacturing, where the resident had the water flowing into their property doing damage and the city had to come in and put a burb in there. That's basically what kind of needs to be done with our place. We need to have somebody take care of it like you did at Atlas.
We didn't put a burb in, didn't you? No, paste it, paste it.
So the developer and the city, that somebody should put a burb in.
At what point is it a developer issue versus a city issue? Maybe Lisa has some input?
Just because the city approves a plan doesn't mean the city is incurring any liability for approval of the plan. That's what the law is. Generally speaking, when a property owner increases the flow or changes the flow of water to the injury of the other property owners, is that property owner's responsibility to. to the injury of the other property owners, is that property owner's responsibility to fairly compensate? So I'm not sure where the property owners are that caused the increased water or the change of the flow. But that's usually who is responsible for these things. So I haven't been involved in this at all, but I'm just telling you generally speaking, without knowing much more than what was just presented tonight, we don't, we're not liable just because we approve a plan. That's not what the purpose of plan approval is. And I don't know where the other property owners are in this process.
So that's our point of view, I guess.
Okay, to push this forward, Tammy, I feel like I, or Brian, I feel like there's some responsibility upon when we approve these plans, whenever we approve these plans as a city, there's some responsibility upon us and maybe a shared responsibility. But it feels like it's being put back on the city. Am I accurate in that or not?
Yes, that's accurate. You know, when we do approve plans, now, speaking strictly statutorily, the South Dakota Supreme Court just kind of renewed that last week. We aren't necessarily liable for anything that we approve or don't approve, believe it or not.
Have we talked to the developer?
Tammy's been in, I don't want to say constant, but frequent.
Frequent conversations with him regarding this. And we did request him to build it this way and to build it up and change the grading. So he's done what we asked him to do. And that did involve him incurring extra engineering costs to change his plans to make it the way that we wanted it to be.
So Tammy, I guess I'm confused. So we asked him to do more, but this is over and above what we'd asked him to do or what's?
This is over and above what we asked him to do originally. This is not in his set of approved plans. And he has agreed to put it into his HOA and have them maintain it. So it's not like, it wouldn't be a city infrastructure that we would have to maintain or clean out or anything like that. His HOA would take care of it after it's built.
So we told him to build an eight-foot wall? This is where I'm confused. So we told him to do that?
We requested that he build up this section so we could change the way the drainage went. So that we wouldn't have a pond in that northwest lot. That's why that lot's so small, is it was supposed to be or originally planned as a detention pond.
So if the developer made the promises about the no water, what recourse?
The developer did not make the promises for the no water.
Who did?
Todd Stone did, who was on planning and zoning at the time.
We also spoke to Dave Swere years ago when this first started up with Doug Metcalf trying to say that we were required to allow this swale through our yard. We came down immediately that day or the next day and talked to Dave Swere. And he assured us that Doug had changed the land and Doug now had to make it work with what he had. And it was not going to go our way. There's been a lot of issues with this property over the years and something you said earlier, I was going to try and expound on that, but I can't think what it is right now.
So my understanding though, even if we do approve this tonight and we put this in, it's not guaranteed. I mean, they still might get water. Right? This isn't a fix-all.
Right, and high flows, they would still get the water because it is still the natural drainage path.
But it wasn't the natural drainage path until the eight-foot wall came across. It was not at all the natural drainage path.
But your property does sit lower.
No, not really. If you, I have the old pictures at my house. If you took the old pictures, the city has aerial pictures, you will see the ground was flat from our yard over to the next property. And there was a huge hole. And it's also noted in the city council minutes from previously that we got it from a very good authority that a lot of not-good field dirt was put into that hole. So we kind of made a mention of that when all this last round of property stuff was going on with the previous owners. So the hole was slowly, slowly filled in with all kinds of junk.
If you go to the edge of our property line where they built this eight-foot sloping thing, you look at the dirt there and there's insulation and there's big rocks that are in the dirt.
It's not good field dirt. It's a lot of big rocks, good-sized rocks. And there's an enormous piece of insulation that I did point out when Brian and Tammy were at our house. I said, "I definitely want that out of there because that's not going to absorb any water." It's big.
Tim, I'm curious what your thoughts are. You probably understand planning and zoning better than any of us sitting up here.
Yes, I do.
Mike? I'd like to hear why you're thinking though.
Well, so normally when you do a development, it is, theoretically, most of the time we would require any developer to sort of hold all of their own water on their property. Yes. So now, having lived here my entire life, I can tell you that the bottom of their property and the top of this property, there's always been an elevation there. Right? We did maybe ask the developer to do, because when this first came to P&amp;Z, if I remember correctly, now it's been a few years, so I'm challenging my memory. But there would have been water when it rained that shed to the west. To make this development work, we tried to get the developer to move as much water to the east as possible. The only way to do that would be to build it up. Because otherwise, you know, you saw the drainage plan that Tammy gave us. Everything from that yellow line would have gone to the west. So we did try. Now, if the detention pond would have been put in, it may have helped some of this. But the problem with the detention pond there is then what do you do with the water? Right? It just sits there. There's no good way to get rid of it. I know one of the things that we have talked about on P&amp;Z for a long time and it has to do with this low-impact development. It has to do with zero-scaping. For probably the last two or three years, we've looked at a way to highlight it, to show developers, to show people what it could look like. We've talked about doing it in other parts of town. We've talked about doing it in some of our other retention areas. Maybe this makes sense to do something like this. So for other reasons, future development, we can show people what it looks like to actually do this type of development. Hopefully, with this kind of development, actually holds more water on the property, which sounds counterintuitive, but that's what it's designed to do. It is not designed to shed water off onto the street. So it improves the infiltration into the groundwater. It improves, it actually lowers our numbers that get shoved into the river because we do have to account for how much stormwater we shove into the river. So as much as I don't want it, I'm conflicted a little by taking city dollars and doing developers' work for them. There is some benefits to the city for doing this type of thing.
Is there one lot on that, on that west side that they're going to try to sell?
Yeah, there's two lots down there, Mayor. One is going to be on the southwest end and the other is on the northwest end. And the northwest end is a teeny, tiny little lot that I don't know how the heck he's going to drain water off of that house without draining it right onto our property. Because there just isn't enough room there.
It's a very small lot.
Very small lot.
He's talking, and then he was even talking about building a house slab-on-grade. So maybe not even a basement. So it's going to be a real little.
It's not a cul-de-sac, but it kind of, it's a little circle there at the end there.
Little bump-in.
Yeah.
Lot bump-in.
So there's two lots there?
There are.
One that butts up to the street, as you can see. And they said they planned the street that far down. That was supposed to also be part of the help with the water. It didn't. Also, you, there may be a slight elevation there. You may say that. We have never in fifteen years ever had water in our, come over our property. Our grass is gone. We're getting a ton of weeds from his property. I have a line of lilacs and a couple other things along that property. And I really do not want to start losing my landscaping to water problems and rot or whatever is going to happen. I just don't want to go that route.
It was mowing and weed killer. And Brian, you told me on the phone that weed killer can be used. Weed killer, I mean, the whole area where the thistles were is all full of weeds. That water comes down, drains off into our property and our lilacs. Heaven for some have those.
So do we still keep this hill that they, that we had them put in place and then we just also put this in too? Is that what was the plan then?
Yeah, so it wouldn't, it kind of shows as a retaining wall. That's how it acts. Christina, can you go to that next page? I'll explain that a little bit. So if you look on that next page, you can see like there's a gabion wall. And then there's an infiltration trench. And then there's another gabion wall. And so it's not going to be that two-to-one slant that's out there now. It's going to act more like a retaining wall. And those gabion baskets, as it is, it's like a wire basket with rock in it. And so that water can distribute evenly and then go into that infiltration trench. And then it would sit in that trench and infiltrate. And once it reaches a certain level, then it overtops that next one. So it would pick up those low flows.
It's not like a mosquito?
No, it tends to stay dry.
Because I understand there'll be a lot of plantings. And I, we think that looks like a good plan. Just so you know, those are all sample things on the right side. None of those are our property.
So they've done some of these in the city of Sioux Falls at Lake Sherman Park. Is it Sherman Park? So in their parking lots. They have put these in between parking lots. So it looks like a ditch. It's got grass planted and you wouldn't even know that these were under there. So every time it rains, these, everything flows into these and then they just drain down into the ground. Now, if it really rains heavily, there's like little valves on top that the water will overtop and then come back out again. But it is designed to catch a lot of the rainwater and then you put something over the top of it. So it just looks like, I mean, you could put wildflowers, you could plant whatever over the top of it.
Also, we did have to have him come back in and put up a second silt fence because the first one was not put in very well and wasn't doing the job. Then he came in and put a second one in. And then when that didn't do a very good job and the slogging mud was coming down around the edge, he had to come and have people backhoe and clean it out. And that was several months ago when it was raining a lot.
And it's been an effort every time we've needed something done. I mean, it just doesn't get done unless we call and call and call.
Here's a picture, kind of from the side. There's the double silt fence. And with that, you know, with that road that comes to the end, it's, you know, I'm going to move the picture. That little road goes out to the street. Then you see it comes down and ends. But if we're looking right at it, you're looking up the eight-foot hill, the road is back there. So there's no terracing, there's no nothing. It just kind of boom, straight down. So we're looking, but that road is right up there, which is okay. But then that's the dirt, none of that is there.
I had asked the question on Thursday about what kind of impact or percentage we'd be looking at with those areas up top seeded. Did we come up with any ballpark idea or is that maybe something we could ask Confluence? I guess I would just hate to prematurely go through all this and then find out once those lots are seeded, it's even half of the water that we're dealing with now.
Seeding it would help, but at the same time, if there's a house put on there, that's impervious surface. So seeding it's probably not going to help.
No, no way.
Any other questions from the council that they need answered before voting? If not, I'm going to call the question. I have a motion a second. Christina, call the roll.
Clerk?
Dave?
David?
Hi.
Fish? Jorgensen?
Hi.
Cole?
Hi.
Parliament?
Hi.
Four to two.
Motion passes four to two.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Can I say one thing? Tammy, can we write this down somewhere? So in the future, that we just know that if something like this, that it puts back on the developer? You know, like the city costs or do something? Is there some kind of guideline or rulebook or something?
I'm pretty big on storm drainage, so I like to think that it's not going to happen again, but.
The problem, Vicki, is that we have some liability here. We made some commitments here. That's the, that's the issue.
At times, what looks good on paper doesn't always work in reality.
But in the end, if we made a call and it was the wrong call, we have to own up to it. That's the bottom line, in my opinion.
So, and this will happen from time to time. It's like if you build a house or make an addition to your house, well, you think you've got enough outlets, but you never have enough outlets. Or closets or anything like that, so.
And I want you to stay on that developer for the weed control and everything else. He needs to have some responsibility in this issue. And clean up the place. And if we're going to invest this kind of money in that place, he's got to work with us.
Right.
And understand what we're doing for him or her. I don't know.
He's unknown, so it's a little hard.
We talk often.
Any new business?
Pardon?
Go ahead, new business. Yes.
Okay, I received a letter from.
Mike. Mike.
I received a letter from a landowner and Tammy, you and I discussed this briefly, from Ryan Delaney. And it concerns the new booster building? Is that a correct term for the, I should say, a reducing?
Yeah, pressure.
Pressure-reducing valve and building that needs to be constructed somewhere on the east side when the water tower's built. And I had told Ryan originally, after he explained the history of the property and the issues over time with the city, that he should come to the city and explain his position. He did send a letter, basically with his opposition to the building, essentially in his front yard. Pass a copy around. Vicki's seen it and Paul has seen it, so. You have to read it and pass it. You can't keep it too. I didn't get a chance to print it off or extra copies. But anyway, he's concerned about the building going up there. And I can sympathize with him in his request to have the building put elsewhere. Tammy, I know you offered to meet with him. But I think it would be helpful for the council to know the whole history. And I don't know of anyone better than Ryan or possibly Brian even that knows the history of that.
There's quite a big history.
Yeah. It sounds to me like he's been through a lot over there.
Well, yeah, it's not on the agenda, so I'm not going to discuss it.
Right.
I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and talk all your city's perspective on it at some point. And Tammy and I did talk about it the other day. We will certainly look at or review alternative sites. As with any plan, if there's another option out there to accomplish the same thing at the same cost, we will certainly take a look at it.
That's kind of where I looked. I contacted Brian and said, "Let's take a look at this and let's be in contact with Mr. Delaney and see if we can come up with any alternative." We're in the early stages of our bidding of this water tower. So if we're going to do something, this is the time to do it. And so we need to look at it. And that's what I've instructed you to. And so we need to look at it, and that's what I've instructed you to do. And I think, so Jack bringing it up just puts it in the official minutes that we're examining it and reviewing it. I would keep Mr. Delaney in the loop on any progress that's being made on that, and we go from there.
Yeah, I think that's why he wanted the letter introduced at least tonight, just so he was on record and so that we're aware of it.
Any other new business? If not, I entertain a motion to go into executive session for a legal matter at 7:29. Motion second to move into executive session for a legal matter at 7:29. All in favor, sitting five, I say not. Opposed? Motion carries. Should be quit.